Please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Father, for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice, wrong.
The clerk please call the roll. Supervisor Breeze?
Here.
Clerk Brinker here. Treasurer Eberth is excused. Trustee Allen? Trustee Chapman? Trustee Jones?
Here.
And trustee Killian?
Here.
Thank you. Forgive me, sis. I do not have an agenda in front of me yet. I'm going to turn it over to the township manager. We're doing budget first, right?
Yes. So, appreciate you turning that over because I do not have the agenda up either yet.
Oh, okay. I'm glad I'm.
Public forum, three minutes.
Yeah.
And discussions.
Here they come. Well, did everybody hear him? He's supervisor in standing. Anyone here for a public hearing, public forum? Seeing none? All those in favor of the agenda? Motion to accept, deny, change?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did you find it?
All right. Yes.
All right. The first item on the agenda is the presentation of the draft 2026 Brownstown budget.
Thank you. I'd like to, I guess, start with, so at our last township board meeting, I know we had an item on the agenda that I wanted to have further discussion in a work session, which is listed under item two. Honestly, in order to do the budget justice as well as that issue, I think it might be better that we scratch number two on the agenda for the evening. What I'd like to do is rather than just speak about the position that was previously on the township board agenda, I'd rather put something together to kind of look at the entire department operation that I can bring back to the board to discuss. So, item two on there, I think with the boards, if your board's okay with that, probably postpone that, remove it from the agenda from tonight, as I don't, once we get through the budget, I don't know that we'll have a lot of time to talk about it. And I want to make sure we do the item justice and have a full discussion with you all about that. So, I'll start with that. Certainly, if there's any questions, I can still answer them as we get through the budget, if there's some extra time. But I wanted to throw that out there to begin.
Mr. Allen, so your motion to approve the agenda, can it include removing item number two?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, thank you.
We don't have an attorney here. What does it, what happens with it being removed? I don't, I don't, I know if it's a meeting, what we do, I don't know what we do with the work session.
Nothing. It's just.
Yeah, it's just there, right?
It's.
In outer space? Yeah. All right. I didn't know if we needed anything further.
No, it'll just be gone until we bring it back.
Okay. Then we voted on that, so we're good, right? Okay. All right.
All right. So, this evening, obviously, our most exciting meeting of the year, talking about our budget, and just to start things off, on the right foot, slide number one has, I updated the date for today's date, but didn't update the fact that this is the 2026 budget that we're talking about. So, a great start on slide one. We're talking about the 2026 budget, not 2025. I always like to start off by thanking everybody that worked so hard on this, starting with all of our department heads who took a lot of time to go through and project what they have done this year, what they're going to finish by the end of the year, and getting into their own operations, their own, you know, ideas that they have, talking with their staff, with residents, and what they want to see in their budget this year, and all the work they put in that. And then, obviously, our finance director, Suzanne Moreno, she really is the architect behind the budget document itself, put a tremendous amount of work in that. So, I wanted to thank Suzanne for all of her hard work on this budget. And she actually labeled the budget the correct year, so that's a good job, Suzanne. So, I always like to start out by talking about what we've done this year before we talk about what we're going to do next year. So, I divided this into different categories than I normally do because I noticed some themes as I was putting this together. So, first, kind of investing in our future. There's a lot of items that I know, over the years, depending on how things were at the time, we didn't always have the funds to look too deep into the future on investments. We have things that we've put off for years, such as capital improvements, things such as our OPEV liability in retiree healthcare that we just, at certain times in our history, didn't have the funds to do a lot with. We've started doing that, trying to address those issues. And so, first item, retiree healthcare. Couple of years ago, we, the board approved some changes, working with our unions, to in how we fund healthcare. And as part of that deal, we started making, well, a one-time, large contribution to our retiree healthcare trust, as well as a commitment to continue to make annual contributions. So, this budget continues that annual contribution. And just as an update, based on our current balance in the trust, we're about at a 30% funding level in the retiree healthcare trust, which, those of you that have been around a little bit, not too long ago, that number was more like 5%. So, this is a huge improvement. The goal was, by recall, within five years, we wanted to, since we did that healthcare deal, we wanted to be out of underfunded status, which is 40%. So, we're creeping closer to that number. And, you know, you never know how things turn out, but so far, it's looking like we're staying on track for that. So, that's, that's good news. That's addressing a huge need and a huge liability that, just 10 years ago, we honestly didn't know how we were going to address that. So, start with that. Second item is succession planning. This has been a topic for the last few budgets, trying to make sure that we are, we have stepping stones available for people to move up if they, if they choose to get invested in what they're doing here. They want to work hard, they want to learn positions, to give them natural stepping stones to move into more management positions or more specialized technical positions. This past year, we obviously added the assistant position in human resources, an assistant position in IT. In DPW, we made a number of staffing changes, and actually, it's been over the last couple of years in DPW, all with that goal of providing stepping stones to give people incentives that if they want to work hard, if they want to learn, if they want to grow in the department, that there's opportunities for them. On the flip side, it provides us with even more capable, more trained people to fill in when there's a need, and also, if we have a vacancy that needs to be filled, you have somebody who at least has a sense of the job that has worked toward that. So, we're continuing to invest in those things. And over the past year, we've done that in these four departments I have listed here. In community planning, I don't know how many years we talked about getting that master plan updated, and the DDA plan, and the town center plan. Now, all of those are completed. So, we've done a tremendous amount of work in the planning side of the future of our community. So, those were all finalized this last year, in 2024 and in 2025. And so, the planning side of those operations were done. Investing in our services, so, you know, some of the positions that we talked about aren't just about succession planning, but are also about providing better services to our residents, or internally, better services within the municipality. And so, those could have gone in either category. But other things like, we made the BSNA cloud conversion, which was a big endeavor and continues to be a big endeavor. That was this past year. A lot of IT, mostly around cybersecurity improvements, but other IT investments that have been made. I mean, we had our large refresh project that we had been working on for a while, and now we've just kind of continued off of there to continue to improve our system and upgrade where need be to make sure that we provide good services to people, that we make things a little easier on ourselves, working with technology, and that we can do so in a safe manner. Our water main project, we've done a couple of water main projects to upgrade our infrastructure, our sewer lift stations. We've begun addressing sewer lift stations, which almost all of them are older and in need of repair, complete replacement. So, we've started to go through and target the ones that are in the worst shape, that are the highest usage. And we're continuing to work to improve those. That'll be something that I think will be a consistent theme for years to come as we catch up. But we prioritize them and appreciate good work in DPW, prioritizing those infrastructure pieces that need to be improved, and starting to work the plan to make that happen. Our sewer investigations, speaking of services that we're offering, I mean, so we purchased a new Vector truck and camera truck that we can utilize to go out proactively, camera outlines, when we get calls from residents that are having a problem where they suspect there's a blockage, or something's just not working correctly. Rather than before, where we'd have to rely on a subcontractor or some other entity to come in and help us, we can go out there proactively now, identify what the problems are, and get on top of them. So, that helps both when we have a concern or complaint come in, but also, we've proactively started going through neighborhoods and started scoping everything out. We want to know what's under the ground, what's in good shape, what's not in good shape, so it can help us build out our improvements that we need to make in the system in the future. So, this past year, we were able to invest in those vehicles, which have helped tremendously with that. The lead line investigation program, this is one that we've, the state has mandated, and we've been working very hard on. Thankfully, just with the age of our infrastructure, most of our community does not have lead lines. There are some more historic areas of the township, especially in the south end, along Jefferson, where we have identified some. But this program allows us to go in, identify where these things are, and then work with residents to replace them. So, we've identified a handful of them this past year, and every single one has either been replaced or is in the process of being replaced. So, it helps make our infrastructure safer, and it's just an ongoing process that we'll continue working on. Our water meter replacements is another big one, where this could, at this point, it's almost something that needs to be put in the IT department, which is the way these things work. We're going through replacing our MXUs, installing them around the township. Those units, what they allow us to do is, rather than having to go and physically read meters, you know, we haven't had to go door-to-door in a long time, but we still, for many years, have had to drive neighborhoods to get close enough to get the radio signal, to get the reads. Takes a tremendous amount of staffing time, just to slowly crawl through neighborhoods to get reads. What this allows us to do when we have the MXUs installed is, we get real-time data on water usage. So, it helps us with reads, where it saves staff time, but it also allows us to get information when we suspect that there's a leak. So, it has helped us on many occasions where we have abnormal usage coming out of a residence, we give the resident a call and say, hey, you know, you don't usually use this much water, we just wanted to make you aware. And we're able to catch a leak that maybe would not have got caught until a couple of months later, when the resident would end up with a massive water bill. And so, that's helped probably save money to a lot of residents by catching those leaks early. And it gives us real-time data so that we know, we can see the peaks and the valleys when perhaps there's a water main break, things like that. So, it's been very helpful. The department has been very aggressive at going through and replacing those. We now, I know, I believe, our entire commercial book, so all of our commercial properties, all have been done. And last I checked, I believe, we're through at least half of our residential parcels. So, we've come a long way on that, too. Obviously, our facilities are the other investments we've been making. We have a lot of ongoing projects completed this year, completely resurfaced our tennis courts, they look great. Police and fire had a number of different building and grounds improvements that I just sort of batched together. I think it's about $600,000 total between the two, just in repairs to the facilities for police and fire. Obviously, under construction, we have our community center, we have our pickleball courts, we have the animal shelter renovation going on. A number of facilities that are being, in the process of being upgraded. And then, in design, we've, we're working on the community center parking lot that has already been designed. We have township hall renovation, which we're beginning, that process is obviously going to bleed over into future years. And then, also, sidewalk and bike path extension, something that the DDA has been working on. We have, our latest bike path extension is, has been designed, and that is also getting through that process so we can begin to get it to a construction phase. So, I always like to talk about, you know, the background of what is going on now that impacts a budget. Obviously, we know our operations and things like that, but things outside of our normal operations that are impacting us. Our revenue sources, obviously, are always going to be important. As we all know, the state cut revenue sharing to the township for this year, which will be impacting our 2026 budget to a tune of about $200,000. Suzanne, feel free to kick me if I mess a number up or something, but a $200,000 cut to our state revenue sharing. It's still, because of other changes in revenues with property taxes, it still represents about 44% of our general fund. Property taxes, about 17 and 1/2%. And then, the community center renovation, we, obviously, with that, under construction, we're not getting any rental revenue. And we knew this, but I think we were all kind of surprised at the amount of rental revenue that that facility brings in. And with it being closed, we're not receiving now. Obviously, that changes. Once it's open, that revenue starts coming in again. But in the meantime, it's been a hit in revenue over there, just because we're unable to rent out that facility while it's under construction. Cost of goods and services, it's no surprise that everyone knows goods and services, inflation has really hit hard. We're not spared from that as a municipality. The goods and services that we have to purchase have also gotten more expensive at a much more rapid rate than our revenues have. I usually mention court funding. We are annually supplementing the 33rd District Court to a degree, something that, again, for a future conversation, we need to talk with our other communities that are within our 33rd District boundaries, talk about that model. It's improved a little bit this year, but something that needs to be a continual conversation. And I also mentioned, there are also some potential legislative changes being discussed with local court funding. Not sure if they'll go anywhere or not, but it could also be something that'll impact court funding, and ultimately, our community's ability to receive revenue and pay into a court system. Service fees, every year, this is something we need to look at. It probably hasn't happened every single year, but we need to annually review our service fees to make sure that the things we can bring in revenue for, that we're doing it to the degree that we can. Things change, things get more expensive. Even if we don't change a fee, we at least need to be looking at them every year in our building department, in our parks and recreation, anywhere that we have a fee that we charge. It needs to be evaluated to make sure that the number is correct, what we should be doing. This year with healthcare, as this board's aware, we were hit with a hefty increase. It's going to cost us about $250,000 more than we were expecting in healthcare costs. And so, I bring that up as a hit that hopefully isn't an annual thing that we start seeing with a huge increase coming in, but something that's hitting us this year. And then, I already mentioned our OPEV liability, just the fact that we still have that outstanding liability, we're working to pay down, and that continues in this budget. And then, a note that I left in from last year, you know, a lot of our one-time revenues are gone. The, a lot of these COVID-related CARES Act, ARPA, these funds are dried up. There are, there's no more funding from that. We still have a lot of that money to spend down, and we are, but we need to be careful about future revenues, making sure when we have a project or have something that we're, that we understand, that we're going to need to find other revenue sources to pay for those things. So, as always, we use a very conservative approach when we put this budget together. If we're going to project a revenue, we're going to guess a little low, just to make sure that we're right the right way. And looking at expenditures, the same, we want to make sure that we're guessing a little high, so that when it all boils out, we're budgeting responsibly. This budget continues to address longstanding capital improvement needs, which we've talked about a little bit already. Continues a lot of our projects that we've begun, a lot of our buildings, parks, sidewalks, roads, bike paths, community facilities, those projects continue in here, and future projects begin to get anticipated, like looking at this facility that we're in today. Succession planning continues, looking at department by department, what kind of positions do we need to look at in the future? What can we do to keep and retain people? How can we help to train people from somebody that comes in, maybe as a frontline employee, that wants to work up into more of a management position? How can we accommodate that and keep them here? And so, looking at that as part of our overall planning. And then, I put this item, building on prior year successes. And what I mean by that is, you know, we've done a lot of planning. So, with our master plan, with our town center, with our DDA plan, that's all great. It's translating that, and we've had that before. We've had good plans before. Translating that planning into actual development. And so, that's really, I think, the focus now, is we've done all that planning, translating that into actual development. Positions, we've talked about a lot of these positions from the service side, from the succession planning side, making sure these positions are, not just positions, but positions that are turning into services for our residents, or services that are needed internally as a municipality. And then, we've talked a lot about best practices and things we implement across different departments, making sure those best practices aren't just a one-time thing, that those are turning into policies, that those are turning into a culture of how we, of how we operate here. So, building on prior year successes, really basically trying to make sure the investments we've made over the last few years continue to be assets for our community and for our residents. So, looking at our major funds, general, fire and police funds, I'd start with looking at, if you look at our current 2025 projected and 2026 recommended, the right two columns, you see a moderate increase in revenue, about 3.8%. Really, because of the hit from the cut to revenue sharing, the police and fire funds are about at a 5% increase each. General fund is about a 1.3% increase because of that hit in revenue sharing. But average together, it's 3.8% overall. I also want to highlight the, one of those middle columns, the 2023 activity, the taller column there. You'll notice between 2022 and 2023, there's about a $4 million difference there. And so, that's important, because that is when a lot of the revenue started coming in for ARPA from those funds. So, you see the revenue get realized. Keep that in mind when we get to the next slide, because it doesn't all get spent at once. And so, it appears later in expenditures as we move forward. Sticking with the same major funds, we have that $4 million that I just talked about, really plays into that 2026 recommended on the right. So, it appears as if there's a huge increase in our expenditures. The vast majority of that is going to be two, two main things. One, the green part of that column is increases in public safety costs, wages and benefits. So, that's going to be specifically related to some of the increases that have been approved. So, that's gone up. The blue portion, if you look at the key, it says transfer to other funds. What that actually means is that is predominantly transfers to our capital improvement, our capital fund. So, this is going to be those projects that back in '22 and '23 didn't get done, the funding came in. Well, now, we're spending it in the budget on things that we anticipated, like the community center, like pickleball, like things like that. So, while it appears that there's, we're just going gangbusters and spending a lot of money, a lot of that has already been previously recognized in revenue. I always like to break down our, all of our funds of personnel costs. Public safety represents, this has actually been pretty, pretty close to the same every year. Public safety represents about 70% of our personnel costs, about 13% for general government. I mean, you can see the breakdown as we go around. But this is just, when you look at overall personnel costs, how they break down by function within the township. So, I always like to flag this, and it's been pretty consistent over the last few years. This is a breakdown of our revenue for our general fund. So, I always like to flag this, you know, when people talk about, this is usually a Mike Eberth talking point, when people look at a tax bill, what portion of your property taxes are being paid. If you look at, property taxes only make up about 18% of our general fund. So, the vast majority, well, not majority, but our largest revenue source for a general fund is state grants and revenues, which is mostly revenue sharing. So, about 44% of our revenue for the general fund comes from that. So, that's something where we always have to be careful about watching the state, making sure that we know what they're doing with revenue sharing, because it is our largest revenue source, and we have to keep an eye on it. I'll note the charge for services line item on here represents 11%. That is one that I think can be improved a little bit, but something that, there's a lot of legal hurdles we have to work through to make sure we do it the right way, but something we can look at. And then, interest in rents is actually pretty consistent over the last year. What, really, what I've noticed is, you know, the interest income has been up, and our rental income, as I mentioned earlier, has been down a little bit. Something that'll change as we go forward. Interest always is going to change, and obviously, once we have all of our facilities open, rental income will come up, too. So, just something worth taking a look at, comparing year to year. So, I want to, just at a high level, to talk about a few of the highlights that are in the budget. A lot of our, our budget is really status quo, making sure we're taking care of the services and people that we need to take care of in our community. Townshipwide, we continue our retiree healthcare trust funding. We are beginning the process of planning for township hall renovation, that's accommodated in here with the state grant we received, and some of the monies that have already been allocated. Succession planning, I think I've probably covered that enough, but making sure we're building the stepping stones. building the stepping stones to protect our future and making sure we can continue to provide services regardless of who's here, who's not, and making sure we're building from within. IT, we continue to make cybersecurity improvements. I know one of the other items that's on Jeff's list, along with many other things, is updating our township Wi-Fi access points. It's a big deal, that's going to continue this year. And parks and recreation, continuing to work with the DNR to do our conversion, looking at some land acquisition. That's when we have some money budgeted to make sure we can continue to have funding available to make that happen when the time comes. Parks improvements through our Wayne County Parks Village Grant will continue. Pickleball courts, obviously, under construction, continuing. Purchasing a new senior services van, something that we're looking at, may even be able to do this year with funding available. Only have a couple of board meetings left, but will either be accommodated this year or into next year, but a new van for our senior services because right now it's pretty well down and out. Upgrading our event center lighting and sound system, which has been needed. In community services, we're looking at a permit system overhaul. So really, we have our BSNA system, but working to make sure that the data that's in there is right, making sure the reports that are run are run efficiently and making it work for us so that we can help our staff, help ourselves, and be able to have accountability in how we do our ordinance enforcement, how we do our rental program, how we do other things in there. Right now, without having some of that cleaned up, it's very difficult to do the way the data is presented in BSNA. So overhauling that permit system is in there with some money to have a consultant come in and help us fix that. And then some vehicle replacements, which have been long overdue in that department. And the DDA continues some of our, our projects that are ongoing, the bike path sidewalk extensions we've talked about, the community center, the animal shelter, community center parking lot, street repairs, we always budget some money for where we can. And the big one that I think is going to occupy most of Sue Trussell's time is the town center. Again, we've done a lot of planning and a lot of conceptual renderings. Now we're at the point of meeting with developers, talking about the nuts and bolts of what it's going to take to do something at this location. A big piece of that is the property acquisition that was done by the DDA to purchase the RV storage site. That's closed. That property is now part of the town center. So all of those things, again, are kind of teed up for us to do some great things there. That's going to be a lot of work that they'll be taking on in the DDA, obviously with support from all of us at the township. Then in DPW, as I mentioned previously, continuing the sewer lift station improvements, lead line investigation program, water meter replacements, and increasing our building and ground positions. So we're looking at, just with some part-time positions, but what we've been able to do, and a lot of credit to Todd and Brad and our building and grounds in DPW, what we've been able to do with those positions has been remarkable. I mean, this is a position we didn't have before. When we would have a building or grounds issue, it was, you know, whoever drew the short straw had to fix it. Now we have them proactively going through, making improvements to our facilities, taking care of small issues before they become big issues, and making repairs and, and improvements that are things that typically before we would be hiring contractors for. I mean, we can, I could list out projects that these guys have knocked out that have saved the township a lot of money by not having to go outside and get them. And we're proactively improving our, our facility. We'd like to continue that, to build on that. In the budget, this anticipates utilizing those positions to help getting into the cleaning part of our facilities. And it's not anticipated in this budget, but at some point, I think it's also worth talking about taking over some of the, some of the landscaping responsibilities, even if it's just seasonal in nature. I think there's some savings that could be had there. And so this is a nice core that we can build on in the future to not only keep up with what we need to in our facilities, but also build on those things that maybe if we can save a few dollars, we could utilize our own staff to do that. So this brings them into the fold, adds to part-time positions to accommodate that. Police and Fire, on the fire side, making a lot of investments in training, making sure we have people ready to take over for fire inspections, investigations, staff in command. A lot of that had gone, had been under-invested in in the past years. That's something that's a focused in this year, a focus in this year's budget. Improving some of their building security is much needed. A lot of building and grounds improvements, many of which were, as I mentioned previously, we did a lot this last year. That continues just to make sure our facilities are kept up. One note I'd make on the fire side, for this year's budget, we are showing a use of fund balance to keep up with the year. So something that we'll be keeping an eye on this year, just to make sure that, you know, our expenditures are not exceeding our revenues, that it's not something that is really a structural issue, something we'll have to keep an eye on as we go forward to make sure that we're, that if we're looking at other, other expenditures in the future, we're going to have to find revenue because we're pretty, pretty maxed out with what we have right now in our fire fund. On the police side, I mentioned just a couple of things. But our drone project continued, I put that, until we see them zipping around. Township hall, I'll keep that on the list. Obviously, our dispatch consolidation project that's been talked about awfully long, it's not specifically in the budget yet, but is set up to accommodate it when it happens. And so that's something that will likely be happening in 2026, so that'll be accommodated in the budget. Also added grappler mechanisms, which I know, you know, got a lot of attention this past year with a couple of departments, trying to find safe ways to end high-speed chases before they become too dangerous. We have in the budget adding those mechanisms to four of our vehicles. And then the same, building and grounds improvements, keeping up with our police facilities as they are in fire. So just things to keep in mind as we go forward with this budget and kind of look into the We just have to have diligence on our spending to make sure that as we identify things that we're doing, that we are tracking them throughout the year, that it's one thing to put a budget together, but then making sure we're hitting those benchmarks. A lot of the budget is based on projections and things change. Things could be more expensive than we expect, things could be cheaper than we expect, revenues can go up, revenues can go down. As long as we're tracking those things throughout the year, make sure we're hitting our targets. That helps us at the end of the year to make sure that we're still on pace and that we're operating responsibly. Really focusing on identifying any savings or revenue sources to offset any new costs we have coming in, something that just always has to be an important part of what we do when we're looking at new expenditures. And I, and I will say, our staff has done a great job on this, it's just something that needs to be continued year in and year out. And then again, being strategic with our funding sources, making sure that we're thinking ahead on what revenue we expect to get in, where that's trending, and to make sure we address, we adjust our operations accordingly. And again, evaluating those fees, any fees that are service fees, making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do, which is to pay for a particular service. The only way you do that is by evaluating them regularly, so keeping up with that. And then I labeled this last one responsible growth. There's a lot of, there's a lot of services that come up from time to time where we try to figure out ways to do better. I think DPW is a good example of it over the last couple of years, where we've looked at better ways to staff our animal shelter, better ways to look at adding positions to provide better services to residents through like our storm and sewer specialist position, our, our water specialist positions, to keep identifying those, those priorities and find ways to do it in the guise of, again, making sure we can afford to do it, making sure we have, we're identifying those revenues, but finding ways to grow responsibly and provide the services that our residents would like to see. And the other side of that is, as I put, aggressively pursuing development, positive development for the community. We have all these planning documents and planning, planning work that's gone into this last year and getting our, our community in position to continue to be proactive in the economic development sphere, to be, bring in the things that we'd like to see in our community, to take that master plan and make it a living, breathing document into what we see coming in the community. So that's something that I think will be real important. Obviously, the town center is a big part of that, but that goes beyond the town center and is township-wide. So again, the, the budget, I know I provided you all a copy. Obviously, the reason we started doing these work sessions is, you know, in the past, there'd be times where there wouldn't be a lot of ability to have public back and forth. This is just a real high-level snapshot of what's in here. And I think our budget, public hearing is scheduled for our first December board meeting. The budget will be there for your consideration. I'm happy now to answer any questions you have. And obviously, if something comes up after the meeting, you still have a question on, obviously still able to answer those questions as they come up. So happy to take any questions you have.
Through, through the chair, just something real quick, right? I just want to say thank you to Mr. Peters and to Suzanne for all your hard work on the budget and to all the department heads for providing all this information. And I know that some of the stuff people don't realize, for Mr. Martin, that the IT security improvements have such a huge impact on our insurance rates, and people don't think about that. And that's something that we had talked about, and so we really appreciate you doing those improvements because they're going to have, you know, it's like a domino effect with insurance rates and everything else. And there's some things now that we'll be more eligible for because we have these IT improvements, so.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, I've got a couple of things I want to talk about. One of them was I've got water, I want to take my water. But that is a great project that is going on, and I'm glad to hear that we can get the job done. Probably we do it now to pull that down. But I know it's time to go out there. Like yourself, go out there, but that is a hot thing. And the second thing was the, well, I'm not going to ask that.
Dear, um, sorry. We have an overall budget surplus of, or over the interest income from, from savings or money funds that are in, in the bank compared to what it was budgeted. It was like $65,000 compared to $340,000.
You said on, on interest income specific?
Yeah. Is that from Mr. Ebers calculating?
It's going to come from a number of sources. So that's going to be any interest accrued from any, any funds anywhere. So certainly, some of the changes that are made in the treasurer's office with those accounts weigh into that as well, which again, we conservatively budget those because, as everyone knows, you know, it's, it's great when something comes in higher than you expect, but that can just as quickly come down lower. But yes, that, that has been projected upward, a little higher than we anticipated.
Any other questions? I see a lot of the department heads out there. Any questions from you all or input? All right, well, Brian, I guess this is a good sign.
All right. Well, I appreciate all your attention and, and again, we'll have this budget presented formally for public, at the public hearing at our next meeting. If there's any questions in the meantime, or if you want to sit down and meet, happy to talk through any of this with you at your convenience.
Again, to reiterate, I'd like to thank everyone, and I'm sure the whole board would, for the hard work this has taken, not only everyone that is in this room, but the whole township, so we appreciate it. Anything further? Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Killian. All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries.